All right, good evening. We will call the meeting to order.
Welcome to Nixa City Hall. This video is going to provide you with an overview of how the city of Nixa conducts city council meetings. We encourage everyone to attend and participate in city council meetings. This is part of how democracy works at the local level. Listening to the perspectives of subject matter experts, city residents, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before we start the meeting, let's review some of council's rules of order. These rules help us make sure our meetings are orderly and efficient while protecting the ability of everyone to have an opportunity to speak. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your own comments until it is your turn to speak. Presenters are invited by the council to provide information during the meeting to the council. These are informational presentations only, and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda, and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours, and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone; otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching, and thank you for engaging with the city of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Kelly Morris. Matt Ogden.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Best.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, we have the traveling trophy back there for the backyard brawl, and I thought maybe if you wanted to, we could get a picture of all of us with the trophy. That way, everyone can stand up and work off that sub we just had before. And I mean like all of us. We can go, you want to go over there?
Come on, Matt. I didn't give blood. I think you read these things the way you want to read them. Like not paying my bill.
Yeah. I can't get up, but I would.
That's Chris Hewitt.
I don't see, sit on your neck over there.
All right, you ready? I'm going to take a few.
Okay. We can talk about it.
And that will be the next thing that Nixa beats Ozark in. So that is the big canned food drive for least of these. So we'll be expecting all of you to bring in canned foods here soon.
Friday. It's next Friday.
Yeah, it's coming up. All right, shall we?
Okay. Well, tonight, we're going to go over just a few things. Just, there hasn't, there wasn't just a ton of changes to the budget in regards to the revenue side or the operational budget from the meeting that we had on September 18th. So, nothing really new to report there. We did add in some professional fees into the park under your direction for the front desk upgrades. So we did add $50,000 to that operational budget, but everything else in operations and revenues pretty much stayed the same, as well as debt. So, the main thing that we've added since the last time we met was personnel. We finally got some personnel figures in, and I will say, this is still a very rough draft. I just got the numbers in, so I haven't had time to fine-tooth comb through things and make sure that everything is accounted for. I would say plus or minus 5% margin of error, so pretty much, pretty much everything is in there. But again, I'd like to go through it several more times and really hash it out and make sure that everything is in there that should be. So, in the personnel considerations, we took the results of the compensation survey, and City Administrator Lyles, I'll give it over to you to kind of tell how we came about the figures that we put in.
Sure. Mayor, council, we've, as Jennifer's. CBiz, can you hear me now? Okay. There you go.
It turned off again. Stop touching it.
Can't touch it.
I'm not moving. I'm not touching anything. All right. As Jennifer said, we did, we did receive the compensation study and been going through those results and working that into the budget to see what would be affordable. Where, what you see before you tonight in these numbers for the budget includes that compensation study or the increases to the employees that the compensation studies said are behind in salaries. That includes bringing, we did have, we'll have new pay grades and positions within those pay grades, so those will be slightly different than what we have now. And then it brings all those employees that are outside of that range or outside of that pay grade into their respective pay grade where they should be. It also takes into account compression and takes into account how many years that they've been in their current position, and that as well as factored into their salary to come up with that increase. Overall, there was about 30% of employees that were behind according to the compensation study that needed to be increased, that left about 70% that were at or close to where they currently, where they should be according to the study. I will tell you, the other thing that we did is that we went back and factored in some time in service. So in other words, an employee that has been here for a long time that may have been in their current position for, say, five, six years, but they've worked for the city for 20 years. So we went back and tried to factor in to give them credit for that other 15 years in that they worked with the city. That is a model that CBiz does support. They actually have that capability within their compensation study, so we utilized that. In essence, gave about 10% credit is what we're shooting for, as long as, again, that's, you know, we can keep that in the budget at that level to figure those salaries. So, the other thing that we're, we're looking at doing is that once we bring all of those employees to, that are behind to where they need to be within their pay grade, then we're also trying to be able to, we're working into the budget additional COLA for next year. So right now, the COLA I think is about 3.2. So we factored in 3% at this point, especially for budget purposes. We factored in 3% COLA for all employees effective January 1st. I will also say that one of the things that, that we did with the compensation study, if you remember, whenever they came and presented to council, they originally proposed about a 6% progression through the pay scale a year until an employee were to max out after about 12 years. Honestly, we don't think that's very affordable for us at that level, but we do want to try to keep up with the COLA, the market so to speak, to make sure that we're, we're still competitive. So we're looking at maybe potentially a 4% each year instead of that 6. We think that may be a little more affordable for us to continue to do, hopefully, year after year, so that we're not going negative within our balances. So, that's kind of an overview of the compensation study. I know it's much, much, much more detailed than that, but I just wanted to give you guys an overview and where we're at presently today. So, I don't know, Jennifer, you have anything else to add about that?
No, just that, that's good. That's what you have before you, takes into consideration all those things. So those, all those things that he just mentioned are accounted for in this budget. Additionally, we have budgeted for the following additional positions. These would be additional headcount. In the electric department, a, an additional tree trimmer. In the wastewater department, a utility worker. In the street department, two building and grounds maintenance workers. In the general fund, in the admin department, a project manager and an executive assistant. In parks, an administrative assistant, and in public works, an executive assistant. So if anybody wants to jump in with what any of those positions are, feel free, or if you have questions about what those are.
Can we start with Matt? What does, what would that position entail?
So, as we've talked over the last several months, years, the parks just become busier and busier, and so keeping up with the daily work, keeping rec track loaded with the programs and things, keeping membership straight, membership billing, all of that fun stuff that goes in, a lot of that has fallen on Katie. Distracting her or taking her away for some of the key functions that we want, especially something like sponsorships, and some of the development, marketing-wise and things like that, that we could further expand upon our reach in the area. And so the hope with this administrative assistant, where it'll take time to train this one, a significant amount of time, but is to free her up and get her moved towards some of those sponsorships and things that like that to be, be able to get more out in the community, more out with our businesses, and try to build on those, as well as take a few things off my plate. You know, with some of the rec track loading and some of our billing for membership on the Silver Sneakers side and Renew Active side, this administrative assistant will be able to do all of that, but the, the hope is to kind of remove some of that daily work, free Katie's time up more to follow into the roles that we'd hope for her as that administrative or assistant director position.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Mr. Lyles?
I will mention, just for clarification, on the public works executive assistant, that's not necessarily an additional person, that's just a new position. We did add an administrative assistant, but we're trying to add one this, it's in this year's budget, we're still trying to hire for that position, but once that position's hired, that will then open up an opportunity for another employee, potentially. So I just want to clarify, it's not necessarily an additional position, but it is another, another level.
Okay.
But the, all the other ones you see are additional positions to what we have now.
Yep.
And then the, I would just also mention, the, under the general fund, the administrative fund, the project manager will be split out between departments, so that won't be solely on the general fund. That will also be paid by some utilities, because that individual will help manage projects for every department within the city, plus potentially private developments in the community as well.
The, and I think I already know the answer to this question, just so I'm clear. The salaries for these positions, are they already estimated and included in?
Yes, they are. They're in the current budget you see before you.
Okay.
We're getting ready to show you some positions that are not, that was requested that are not in the budget, but we'll get to that in a second.
Okay.
Okay, that's the next one. Unfunded positions. These were positions that were requested by departments and did not make it into the budget. The communications department asked for a video producer and a graphic designer. Legal department asked for an assistant attorney, and the police department asked for four officers.
And then, if you'd like, I could expand on those as well. And Chief, feel free to jump in as well. I'm going to talk briefly about the police, police officers first. Just for history as a reminder, we have added two officers additional in this year's budget ahead of time. We've been supplementing that with the regular general fund in anticipation of the additional sales tax revenues. We have not started seeing those revenues yet. We anticipate, at least hopefully by first, at the end of first quarter, we're hoping, that we'll start to see those revenues come in, as some businesses report quarterly. So even though they're supposed to take an effect on October 1st, it's still going to be a while before we start to see those revenues. So Chief has asked for additional officers. Right now, and we have two. What we want to do is revisit that after the first quarter, once we start seeing those revenues come in, and if they do come in as expected, we'll be back to council asking for additional officers at that point. So that, that's kind of the plan there. We just don't want to necessarily add those yet, and so we, so we start to see those revenues come in and get an idea. We have budgeted for potential, what we think those revenues are going to be, but we just need to wait and see when they start, we start receiving those. And then Chief, feel free to expand on anything else.
Of course, the idea is to honor what we said with the sales tax and, you know, when we were out for that, and, you know, we're working toward that 11 officer goal, and as we know, we can't, you know, we certainly can't hire them all at once for a multitude of reasons, financial reasons, of course, and then, of course, also just the amount of training and that it would take and the burden it would put on the department to hire that many officers. So I do believe that we're going to have the money, but it's, it's got to proof out. So that's why we're looking at that second quarter addition. So I fully anticipate making those budgetary amendment requests after the first quarter.
Chief, for training purposes, how many officers can you have in training at one time?
Well, it really kind of depends on how many field training officers we have available. It also depends on how much other training we have going on, so it's a hard question to ask or answer specifically, but it kind of depends. I mean, we've trained up to, I think we had four at one time, and that was pretty burdensome, just having four with the scheduling and.
So what's the comfortable, you'd say two maybe is a comfortable number to hire two at a time, or?
I would be comfortable going to four, but I think that's kind of at our, that would be really our limit with the amount of training and, and the time and effort it takes to put those people through. Of course, there's a lot of other factors. For example, if you hire what I'll refer to as a rookie or someone out of the academy versus a lateral hires, that could greatly vary the amount of time and effort we put into that training.
Thank you.
And then I'll also add, just, just for clarity, I know it's kind of outside of personnel, but it is tied in. Along with that additional sales tax, we have to be able to afford the new police department building along with that. And so we do anticipate, we actually met with our financial advisors about some options on financing, so our plan currently is to start that planning phase in 2024 to include engineering, architecture work. All of those things will be happening over the next year. And it does take about a year to get all that planning done to a level before you can actually start to even think about building. So that as well will come, those costs will be quite expensive, quite frankly, they, potentially around a million dollars, so one to 1.2 million. So that also will need to come out, we'll be looking at those revenues to afford that as well. But again, that's not there yet until we start seeing some of those revenues come in. I will say that there is an option that we're looking at on potentially even borrowing, borrowing those funds upfront to go ahead, so we're not slow on the process, so we can keep that process moving, even from our utilities that is 0% interest that we will pay back once it's bonded. So that is something that we can consider, and we'll be talking to council about in the future. But I just wanted to mention that those things will also be happening in next year's budget. So once we start down that process, we'll be back to you again.
So looking at the communications positions, have we updated the budget to allow more funds for the communications department to outsource some of this stuff?
We have not. That is something that we actually visited with Mr. Douglas about today, about what that's going to look like, and what we're doing right now is, we're going to, it's a very big possibility that that may happen, because we have some projects that need to be completed. But we're waiting for Jennifer, we're going to wait till she gets through the numbers and make sure this percentage, that we're a little more confident in the percentage before we start adding other things back into the budget. Once we get that to where we're confident, again, we're very early still, I know it's October, but we're still, you know, early in this process and, and this work session, so. But if that is, you know, definitely something that council wants us to try to work in, depending on that percentage, we'll definitely, we'll definitely try to do that.
And just so council's aware, the reason that I asked, I do feel that video production is, is huge. I think the, the latest survey that went out had to do with communication from the government to the people, and, and I've heard this before, but one person stated that what, when we do a post, there's too many words at times. People will sit and watch a three to four minute video, but they won't read three paragraphs. And I'm guilty of it, too. I mean, you sit there and look at Facebook reels for three hours, but you won't read a five-minute story. And I think those things come in handy not just with what's going on in council chambers, but with the police department, with, I mean, public works. I mean, when there's a power outage or something, having someone actually come on for 90 seconds and tell them exactly what's going on and what we're doing, I think that would go a lot further than Drew having to type up a whole press release statement, then email it out and do all that. People will watch videos and they'll share videos. We don't get a lot of shares when it's a four paragraph explanation on what happened, what we did. They just want it fast. So I do believe that that video producer position is, is important, but I think it would be good to look at it in 2024, maybe using a third-party company, someone who does videography, and see what kind of traffic we get on stuff like that. And then I think if we had some, some hard numbers showing that, okay, more clicks, more shares, more views, people spent more time on the page because of it, that would definitely help justify hiring in that position. We could definitely keep them busy, that wouldn't be a problem. I mean, just in the last month, the amount of video stuff that's been done is enough.
Absolutely. And I'll also still mention, too, I mean, there's always the possibility that if we get through this and the percentage stays low, we can always still come back and revisit any of these positions that we currently don't have funded. This is just kind of our, our starting point.
And the opposite side of my argument is videography is not cheap. So I'm not sure how far, whatever we decide to appropriate for that, I'm not sure how far that would go.
Yep. Very true. Mr. Douglas, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just your last observation, that the hourly rate for high-quality video production is pretty high, and they're not going to be in all call, on-call situation where we can call them out to do emergency things, but they'd be able to do video projects, but you know, you're talking about, you can get into, easily get into $250 an hour on, on video production, and you're still going to talk about, you know, depending on the project, eight to 10 hours of shooting, plus eight to 10 hours of editing, and so you're spending thousands of dollars each video, whereas having a position on staff, then you're able to create, what I would propose would be that that person be responsible for turning one video a week, that would be something that would feature at the top of the news, kind of like the schools do. They have a video at the top of every newsletter, and they're pushing out a video product every week. That's something I'd like to get to where we can accomplish that, where we're kind of talking the news of the, news of the week, news of the month, and pushing whatever's important at the city. We're also creating promotional things for parks, talking about what public works does and how does the utility system work, right? Explaining things that are kind of dense and that the public doesn't generally understand, and being able to convey those things in an easily digestible manner that will kind of hold people's attention. And then also being able to do larger projects like a police recruitment video, being able to do something that's a welcome to Nixa video. Hiring, right? Why, why should I apply for a job at Nixa, right? We can do all kinds of kind of these bigger feature videos, it'll take much, much more hours of, of shooting to compile all the necessary B-roll, the script-writing process and approval process. Those, those kind of projects easily get into 20, 20 to $50,000 or more if you're hiring that out. So that's, that's the logic behind creating a position that's paid, is then you have them all year and you can, you can squeeze a lot of different video products out of somebody who's just dedicated to writing scripts, working out the logistics of where they're going to shoot, shooting it, editing it, and pushing, pushing it out on our communications channels. The second thing I would add is just that the graphic designer would also serve all departments of the city. There's a lot of work that Macy and I both put into creating graphics that go on the social media, the things that go on the website, things that are nice visual aids for documents, whether it's an annual financial report or things like that. There's a lot of time that we can put into those, but neither Macy and I are really highly skilled, I would say, at the softwares where you can really do fancy magazine-quality work for informational graphics, which are also very easily digestible, and you're getting multiple paragraphs of information from a single glance at a single graphic. And so the idea there is to invest in having a full-time graphic designer position that can produce that kind of thing. But I think that it's actually going to be easier and more affordable to farm out graphic design work than video producer work, which is why what I had communicated to Mr. Lyles is, my priority would be to fund, if I had my, if I had to choose, I would fully fund a video producer position and hire out graphic design work rather than the other way around. I think you'd actually get more bang for your buck that way.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. I actually had someone who's very involved in the community say, well, I didn't know this was going on, and I said it was in the newsletter. She's like, well, I don't want to read the newsletter. She's like, I'd watch it, though.
Yep. People really like videos right now.
Side note, I do read the Christian County headliner, and we love it. Thank you.
Okay, and then the last one, the assistant attorney for legal.
Yeah.
Again, it's one that Mr. Woodman requested. Obviously, it's a very busy time in that realm, especially with prosecution. Even though it's at county now, we still have to, Mr. Woodman still has to handle those prosecuted cases and such. So that was a request as well, that's currently not in the budget. Again, it's something that we can continue to visit as we get, you know, more solid in the numbers and, and figure out exactly where we're at. But it, currently, it is not in the budget. But Mr. Woodman, you're welcome to, if you have anything to speak on.
Yeah, just to highlight, you know, I think the request for the assistant attorney is coming from the standpoint of the overall health of the organization. You know, we have plans to hire more police officers. More police officers means potentially more tickets. More tickets means more prosecution. More prosecution means that my time handling municipal operations issues is more limited. Additionally, it's not unusual for a city of our size to have additional assistance when it comes to legal advice. We're kind of an outlier in that regard, and honestly, the main concern from my perspective is one of succession. You know, my position, I, you have to have an attorney appear in court, and, you know, for municipal prosecution matters, as an example, we don't have a backup right now. So if I can't make a court date, which hasn't happened, we don't have a backup. We just don't have court.
Okay, and then the last one, the assistant attorney for legal. Again, it's one that Mr. Woodman requested. Obviously, it's a very busy time in that realm, especially with prosecution. Even though it's at county now, we still have to, Mr. Woodman still has to handle those prosecuted cases and such. So that was a request as well that's currently not in the budget. Again, it's something that we can continue to visit as we get, you know, more solid in the numbers and figure out exactly where we're at. But currently it is not in the budget. But Mr. Woodman, you're welcome to, if you have anything to speak on.
Yeah, just to highlight, you know, I think the request for the assistant attorney is coming from the standpoint of the overall health of the organization. You know, we have plans to hire more police officers. More police officers means potentially more tickets. More tickets means more prosecution. More prosecution means that my time handling municipal operations issues is more limited. Additionally, it's not unusual for a city of our size to have additional assistance when it comes to legal advice. We're kind of an outlier in that regard. And honestly, the main concern from my perspective is one of succession. You know, my position, you have to have an attorney appear in court. And, you know, for municipal prosecution matters, as an example, we don't have a backup right now. So if I can't make a court date, which hasn't happened, we don't have a backup. We just don't have court. I can count on one hand the number of council meetings that I've had to miss. But if there were to be something that were to occur that, you know, I'm not available for a council meeting for whatever reason, there's nobody to staff the council meeting. So and there isn't a department in the city currently that has that issue other than the law department. So that's really the primary, primary motivation for the request was one of organizational efficiency and succession planning potentially.
And then I'll also mention if, if at some point we are able to afford that, whether it be this year or subsequent years, it would also afford us the opportunity to have an attorney at all the planning and development meetings as well, which could be, you know, pretty important at times. So just another thought.
Well, and just to remind council, one thing that we had discussed with Mr. Woodman was our intent to make sure that burnout doesn't occur. So that, that also is something that we need to be thinking about because this year alone has been a little bit heavier in the legal department for us. And, and I think we've kind of grown accustomed to how well he does his job and we just, we don't notice if there's a backlog, but we also don't see his day-to-day stuff. So I would think this is something that we should definitely, definitely consider, especially if the numbers come back a little bit better. So see, see what you can do.
I'm just going out to my tree and pick some more money off.
Yeah, right out front, right?
Okay, that is that. And I just kind of put down a comparison of last year's budget compared to the proposed budget that we have in the personnel departments. Again, this is reflective of the new positions as well as the compensation survey results. And so you can kind of see the comparison there for each department. And there we go with all the departments. And the grand total, 23 compared to 24 was an increase of $1,391,265, 9.75%.
Can you go back to the first slide of that, please?
That one?
Yes, thank you.
And this includes the 3% COLA?
Yes.
Okay.
Also point out that this is personnel, not only salaries, but also benefits as well. And the good news is that our health insurance rates did not change. So we have not experienced a rate increase in our health insurance benefits for six years, which is unprecedented, but we'll take it. So our health, vision and dental plans are all remaining the same as far as the premiums go. So that has helped keep these personnel costs down.
And then I will, if you don't mind, Jennifer, I will mention that, as you said, we, no increases, health insurance is unprecedented for six years in a row. It's amazing. Good work to our broker. He did a fantastic job working that. But that's also going to allow us to continue with the same health insurance that we've had, which is also a benefit, I think, to our employees. But I will mention that we are going to switch dental and, and vision to another company. I think Kansas City Life is who we're switching to. And the reason I mentioned that is although there's, there's no cost additional to the city or the employee, but there is a lot more, more benefits within those programs. So the employee assistance program is much more robust, I can't talk, robust than what we currently have. And then they also offer a rollover in the dental that will help the employees as well. So I think that'll be a benefit to all of our employees. And Kansas City Life, they pretty much, I can't, we can't guarantee you, couldn't guarantee you 100%, but they cover most, they have the same providers for the, generally speaking. They have most of the same providers as what we currently have. So we will be switching those, but again, there's no additional cost at this point, just some additional benefits.
Any other questions about personnel? Any other comments from staff or anyone?
How many total employees do we have?
I want to say with the new additions, row 150, that's what we have now. But with the additional positions, what was it, five, six additional, 156 or so? Okay, moving on to the other thing that has changed significantly since our last meeting is in the capital projects. The first meeting we had in September was kind of everything, everything everybody wanted, their, their wish list, which totaled $27,694,032. And then Mr. Lyles got his red pen out and said, let's cut some. So the capital budget that you see before you is $18,332,236. Most of these projects have just been moved to subsequent years. And so you've got your little worksheet and it, that first column that says department requested, that is what the departments requested for, for the projects to be in next year's budget. The 2024 draft column shows those that were cut and moved. And you can see most of them were scooted over to the subsequent years, to 2025 and beyond. So if we're looking at the electric fund, from the forestry bucket truck down to the West Highway 14 lighting, those were just moved over to 25, cut out of 24, moved to 25. And the total of that was $1,955,000 in the electric. The next page is the water department. And a lot of those were ongoing projects that we've already started or have things on order. And so we didn't cut any of those. The, all of the ones, projects that the department requested for 24 are in the 24 budget. So that wasn't too much of a change. And the next page is the wastewater fund. And again, you'll see same thing there. We didn't cut anything from that one. But I think we're going to have to because the wastewater fund is the negative, so. The next one is in the administration department. And the city welcome sign and the wayfinding signs were moved to 2025. So that's 250,000 in capital projects in the administration department that were cut out of 24 and added to 25.
And Jennifer, before we move on, just, just, if you'll notice on that same sheet, you have the city hall remodel now at 1.4.
Yeah, we added that and have that number before. So that's added in there.
Now, I will mention that we, we don't have that breakdown yet. We're working on that to see what amount of that goes to utility billing and what amount would be more or less general fund for administration. Once we have that, we'll, we'll make sure we let council know that. But the total cost is estimated about 1.4.
And the next one is the police department. And if you'll notice, the body cameras and tasers have been moved to 25. So that's a total of $483,641 that was cut out of 24 and moved into 25. And then in the parks, I apologize, I didn't get that first column unhid on that, on the sheet. But I can tell you from the Oaf Park Development North parcel all the way down to the community center, front desk upgrades, all of those were cut out of 24 and moved into 25. And so really the only two that remained is the trail extension from McCauley Park, which we're using impact fees for, and the pool leak repair, which we're using ARPA funds for. Okay, and the next sheet is the planning and development department, and it's the comprehensive plan. It's ongoing, so it's in, it's in next year's budget. And the next, we have the Cherry Street Stormwater. That one is in next year's budget. We're using ARPA funds for that, so that one didn't get cut. And finally, the street department. And again, I didn't get that first column in there, sorry. But I can tell you from the small dump truck with the snowplow down to the new back, oh, not the new back, the new line painter. Those were cut out of 24 and moved to 25. Additionally, there is another project that, that I didn't get added. With the addition of the two new building and grounds maintenance positions, we are adding two new mowers. So you need to add 30,000 to that 24 draft column for those two positions. So 185,000 was cut and moved to 25, and then 30,000 needs to be added for those two mowers. So the total for the 24 street capital budget is $3,200,500. It's clear as mud, huh? Okay, I know that was quick. So is, is there any questions?
Mayor, council, there are significant cuts that we made to the CIPs, as you see. But then again, that was based on some direction to try to build up our reserves back up a little bit for at least a year and trying to, try to take care of some of the other needs that we had in the city with personnel, some of the positions, compensation study, those kind of things. So and at the same time, trying to build our reserves back up. So obviously, we can discuss any of the CIPs if you'd like to. But, oh, I will mention on the parks, I meant to mention it when she was going through that, you'll notice the, the additional trails are still on the parks. That we're going to use, we have to use impact fees or we, we have to give them back, basically. So we need to utilize those and spend those. So that's, that's going to be utilized in impact fees to do that. So that's not really coming out of our reserves necessarily.
Which one of the, going to the wastewater fund? I remember we discussed the UV system. Which one was it that was kind of the main problem child? Like, I guess there was, some of the UV bulbs were down. Okay, so that's the one that stayed on here?
Yep, and that, and just so it's on for the public, it's Tuscany Hills.
Okay, oh, yeah, thanks. The carpet replaced at the city hall, would that not be something that would be included in the remodel?
Not the entire, if you would like us to work on that for the entire building, we can definitely get that quoted in. We did not quote for entire replacement of all the carpet. Now, the areas that's going to have construction potentially, yes. But the other areas in the, of the city, start, we're starting to see, or city hall, we're starting to see a lot of wear and tear and stains in our carpets. So that's for the entire city hall outside of the remodel, but, yep. And again, that number honestly is a shot in the dark, based on square footage only.
Any questions? I've looked at these things too many times already.
Okay, so the final results. Can I draw your attention to the final column there and your, on your budget dashboard? In the general fund operations, which is operating plus personnel plus interfund transfers, as a percentage of revenues, right now we're sitting at 97%. In the street fund, it's 52.34 because streets is very heavy on capital. Electric is 98.29, water 82.12, and wastewater 76.78%.
And then I'll, I'll just mention that 97% that you see on their general fund, that's without the sales tax addition added into that as revenue. So obviously, that, that percentage would go down. But since we're not necessarily budgeting for those expenses yet, we wanted to show you the percentage absent that.
That's good because that way we can help make sure we're allocating those funds properly.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, but there's a caveat, and that is that I haven't, I haven't gone through it with a fine tooth comb. So I told you that before and I'm going to say it again. This may change. I mean, I've gone through the budgeting process a lot in my career and you think you've done everything and then you find like a $400,000 mistake. So that can happen. But like I said, I, I will spend the next couple of weeks just going line by line and making sure that everything is accounted for. But at this point, 97% sure everything is copacetic. So anybody have any questions, comments?
You guys can digest this for a couple of days and then... Thank you very much for everything. Well, everybody, really. I know I've gone cross-eyed looking at all of it. I'm sure you guys are in the same boat, if not worse.
Okay, well, if there is anything that crops up that you want to see in there or you have a question about, feel free to reach out to Mr. Lyles or myself or the mayor and let, let them know. And we'll do our best to get it in there, answer the questions or whatever we need to do for it, so.
Thank you. Before we move on, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll start our, the rest of the meeting at 7 o'clock. We'll start our, the rest of the meeting at 7 o'clock. All right, call the meeting back to order. All right, we'll start off with our visitors' section. If you are a visitor and would like to speak, please do so at this time. Anyone sign up? Okay. No, no, no. All right, we will close the visitors' section. Moving on, First Reading, Council Bill 2023-45.
First reading, Council Bill Number 2023-45, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Amending Several Sections of the Nixa City Code For the Purpose of Consolidating and Modifying Provisions Related to the City's Fees. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am pretty excited tonight to be presenting Council Bill 2023-45, which, if approved, would establish a fee ordinance for the city. So the City of Nixa, like most cities in this state, uh, they charge what are called user fees for the provision of certain city services or approvals. What we're talking about in, what, the, the things that would fall within that category are things like zoning applications, business licenses. And the theory behind charging a user fee is so the cost of providing the service isn't borne by the general taxpayer, but borne by the people who are seeking that service or seeking that approval. Currently, the city, uh, the city's fees are scattered throughout the code and, uh, sometimes in uncodified ordinances, which makes it kind of difficult to ascertain what the fee is or, or when it was adopted, when it was last updated. Uh, this creates some, uh, issues with confusion and inefficiency and not really knowing, uh, without doing some research on what the city's fee is for a particular item. So to attempt to address these concerns, uh, the council bill presented tonight, if approved, would consolidate, uh, most of the city's fees into Section 2-151 of the City Code. This is an existing code section. Right now, it contains, uh, the authority for council to waive fees for certain individuals, uh, by resolution. That language is still in that section, just moved to a different subsection. Uh, the intent being that Section 2-151 would, from this point forward, function as the central reference point, uh, for city fees, uh, going forward. With that, uh, staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council or the mayor may have on this item.
I share your enthusiasm.
Agreed.
For the newer council members, one of the, well, I guess one of them's not here, but one of the things that, um, I had discussed with Mr. Woodman back in the beginning was, um, I felt like we were bringing ordinances and stuff back multiple times because of things that were just kind of haphazardly done. Let's see if Drew noticed. Um, so I appreciate you cleaning this up.
Well, and so this could come back in the future. One of the, one of the, um, uh, one of the pieces of intent behind this is typically cities will study their user fees so that you can ensure on a regular basis that you are recovering costs. Um, this will put us in a better position to be able to do that work in the future.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Anything from council? We'll open up the public hearing if you would like to speak on this. Uh, we'll close the public hearing. Any other questions? Moving forward, Second Reading, Council Bill 2023-43.
Second reading, Council Bill Number 2023-43, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Program Agreement for the Cheyenne Road Multi-Use Path Project. Presenting is Street Superintendent Jeff Frisell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this ordinance we're bringing to you tonight is, has two parts. Uh, part number one is a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, allowing the city to utilize transportation enhancement funds for the engineering and construction of a 10-foot-wide multi-use path from Cheyenne Valley Development to Summit Elementary. Uh, this project would be a reimbursable project. Uh, these funds would reimburse at 80% of the estimated total cost of $880,240. Uh, the city's portion that we would be responsible for in the end would be $176,191. The second part of this ordinance would be a budget amendment. A budget amendment is necessary for the, for the total project price. Uh, since this is a reimbursement agreement, we must have these funds in place and obligated for the project beforehand. Uh, if approved, ARPA funds would be used as the funding source for this project. You have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions?
How soon can this project get started?
I'm sorry?
How soon is this project gonna get started?
Uh, there are things in the work with, uh, finding the engineer and everything as we speak, so it's ongoing. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, this project is, is through the LPA process with the Missouri Highway Department. Uh, this process starts out with RFQs to where we look, start looking at engineers for their qualifications. Uh, after that, uh, the program agreement needs to come about before we can get, uh, the engineers on staff with us. And then all of the funding and everything, most of the time, these projects can take up to three years. This one has a very strict timeline, so we are trying to hurry that along as much as possible. Uh, one of the caveats with this is that if we don't meet this timeline or this, that they have set out before us, we will not be eligible for the construction side of these funds. So we are moving as fast as we can. Uh, if everything goes as planned and, and goes as it's going right now, construction for this project will be in 2025.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we will open up the public hearing if you'd like to speak on this. And I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? All right, nothing else, I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
First by Mr. Ogden, second by Mr. Vess. Roll call, please.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Council Bill 2023-44.
Second reading, Council Bill Number 2023-44, An Ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa Amending Chapter 107 of the Nixa City Code For the Purpose of Updating the City's Regulations Related to Flood Plane Management. Presenting is Planning and Development. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gabby.
Oh, man. What are you doing? I opened the wrong one.
First alert, tick meteorologist Ron.
Sorry, Macy. I should have opened the one from September, but so, Mayor, council, good evening. We're going to talk about our floodplain ordinance right now. The City of Nixa participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. And in order to maintain our participation in that program, we have to adopt the new FEMA firm panels, which is the flood insurance rate map plan panels. Oh, good. It's going to be a fun one.
Slow down.
Thank you, Macy. Can we have the last person that presented this, please? I feel you. Basically, we're under firm panels from 2010 right now. They were very basic, very basic. The only FEMA flood zone that we had was an unnumbered A-zone. Our floodplain management ordinance is basically mirrors what we saw in those panels. Fast forward to 2023, where we are adopting new panels which go effective next month. These panels, which are on the right of your screen, have a lot more information on them. Christian County is getting a lot more detailed flood insurance rate maps. Therefore, we have to amend our code to basically address all the new languages that are in them and basically what you're seeing on the screen. So there's, you know, special floodways through the floodplains now that which weren't there in 2010. It's a lot more detailed. It has cross-sections that show the flooding, the base flooding elevation in that specific area. And again, this is just another example of the 2010 ones on the left versus the 2023 ones on the right. Again, a lot more detail. There's going to be a lot more floodplain added into these maps, so there's going to be a lot more floodplains in Nixa due to more detailed mapping processes. So the changes that we are making to our ordinance is basically the minimum language that we need to add to continue our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The majority of these changes came from a draft ordinance from the State Emergency Management Agency, which basically detailed what we needed to add since we're moving to a more detailed firm panels. Another significant change that we're making in the floodplain ordinance is that we are opening it up to any qualified person within our staff to be the floodplain administrator. We're allowing the city administrator to basically select that person based off qualifications. Right now, it is specific to the city planner being the floodplain administrator, but there may be a time when we hire an engineer or somebody that's far more qualified or experienced to be a floodplain manager for the city. So that's another significant change that we're making. Again, these are a long list of changes. Rather than rambling through them all, it's just to address what we are adding or the new firm panels that we are getting next month is basically the language changes is to just make it so that we can interpret what is in them. Other than that, staff does recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'm available. Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Gabby.
Go floodplains.
If no other questions, I will open up the public hearing if you'd like to speak on floodplains. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? I will accept the motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Matt Ogden?
Yes.
Moving on to the resolutions section. Resolution 2023-51.
Resolution number 2023-51, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the issuance of a beautification facade grant for proposed improvements at 108 East Mount Vernon Street. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gabby.
Mayor, council, good evening. To cause confusion, I'll do this one sitting down. We have an application for a property owner that wants to receive reimbursement through the facade grant program. They are doing an extensive rehab to 108 East Mount Vernon. The facade grant only covers exterior projects, but they are doing both inside and outside projects. He has submitted three qualified bids. He is required, according to the grant program, to use the lowest bid, and that total came in at $16,020. Another interesting case with this one is that the building is currently vacant. So if the building has to be occupied within three months after receiving the reimbursement through the city, if it's not, then the funding that we offer them is reimbursable or refunded back to the city. If it's not, the building is not occupied within that timeframe. Other than that, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this one at their last P&amp;Z meeting. Nobody approached the commission to oppose. The commission also did not offer a recommendation on the amount of funding to offer this applicant. It is up to the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council's discretion as to how much to award. He is eligible to receive the max for one project, which is 7,500. Staff does recommend approval. If you have any questions, I'm available, and the applicant is here too, if you have any questions for him.
So Scott, you mentioned something about the vacancy of this project. When you say they have three months to get the facility occupied, is that from three months from today? Or is that from the time they complete the project and we fund that?
The way I interpret the grant program language is that it will be three months after they receive the reimbursement. So it'll be after completion of the project.
And so we wait until the completion to reimburse? Perfect. Thank you.
What are our options if, I got really loud, I'm sorry. If, you know, say he's having issues getting a tenant? Because my concern with that on this one, because this is a little different, there's not someone currently in there, would be, it'd be hard to take a, you know, say they voted on the max. It'd be hard to take a $7,500 hit right before opening up or getting a tenant. I mean, so I guess that may be more of a legal question. Can we extend that deadline if it's getting close?
Yeah, we would bring action back to council to authorize that, but we could do something like that.
Okay.
The harder question is what you all decide to do if you don't want to offer an extension. Right now, we don't have any kind of contract mechanism or anything to claw back the funds once they leave, once they leave the city's coffers. So that's a concern that I have with this application that's been identified with staff on this, that, you know, once the money goes out the door, it's going to be a little bit, it's less of a reimbursement situation, more of a trying to claw back funds and having to file some kind of legal action to do so and enforce the parameters of the grant agreement. So just something to be mindful about when considering this.
Yeah. I have a little bit of issue with that because, I mean, this is a beautification program, and if the outside of the building is, in fact, rehabbed or whatever, then that was the point of the program. The point of the program isn't necessarily gaining a tenant. Obviously, we want someone to be in there. We would love to have a new business, but I don't know. I'm not a big fan of that. So.
Well, if council elects, we can, you can direct staff to look at that, and we can propose something at a future council meeting to remove that as a requirement or modify that requirement. The grant, the grant application requirements are adopted by council.
I wouldn't mind looking into that. I mean, because obviously, it's not, being the owner of a property that they plan to lease it out, it's not in their best interest to keep it unoccupied. So I just feel like that may be adding a little bit extra stress on a situation that doesn't need to happen, but.
Scott, you also said that they could be required to reimburse that. It didn't say that they had to, right?
Language says that they should, or should, but will be required to reimburse. So, yeah, I'd like to look into that. And then as far as this one is concerned, we can deal with that when the time comes. Hopefully, it won't. But any other questions from council? All right, I will open up the public hearing if you'd like to speak on this. And this is also the time for the owner to sing "I'm a Little Teacup" if you really want. I'm just kidding.
I'm a little shorter. I'm going to pull that down a little bit. Good evening. Yeah, my name's Tristan Jackson. Like Scott was saying, I own the building. It's just the west of Rocco's Pizza, 108 East Mount Vernon. And, yeah, I'm excited for this project. We were recently informed that they actually, Planning and Zoning does offer it, and we were really excited to, you know, submit application for it and just basically make that whole area. I mean, there's a lot of work going in over there. It's just catty corner to the mill. And whenever I was able to purchase it, I was excited to, you know, that's kind of one of the last buildings over there that's in pretty rough shape. So I'm excited to kind of, you know, there's a lot happening in downtown Nixa, and so to be a part of that, to, you know, make it nice again and to kind of help out with the renting it out portion. Work for the exterior, obviously. If we were able to get approval, the work for the exterior will be happening within the next month or so. And same thing, within three weeks to a month, I'll start advertising the building for lists to try to get a tenant in there. And so hopefully, within the timeframe, you know, after work's complete, then I have three months to get a tenant in. The goal is to make every stride to actually have a tenant secured, hopefully even before the interior cosmetic work is finished, to have a tenant locked down for that. So hopefully, obviously, you know, the world's kind of crazy right now. People are trying to save a buck. So, you know, I'm hoping it's not going to be an issue renting it out, but I have every, every, every thought in me to work towards getting that rented out as soon as possible. That's not just kind of on the back burner, oh, yeah, we'll get there when we get there. That's, you know, because like Jared was saying, you know, ideally, you know, it's not good for me to just have that set vacant. So I'd like to kind of get this project going, so. But, yeah, so to kind of help out with that. And, you know, and as far as anything goes, I know he was saying about having some securities for you guys if, for whatever reason, if that does go into effect, and they do need some kind of security as far as like a contract or something like that that I would have to sign stating that, like, hey, if this isn't, you know, we decided this is for sure, you know, within three months, if it's not rented out, we need to talk about reimbursement or anything like that back to the city. I'd be more than happy to talk about that. And because, you know, like I said, ideally, that's not my goal is to keep it vacant. The second the exterior work's done, I ask for reimbursement. I'm hoping to either already have a tenant secured or within the next, you know, month or two, have somebody, so. Yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me as far as any kind of work that's happening there.
I don't know if this would be for staff or for you, but these bids that were submitted, those didn't, those were for the exterior work only, right?
Yeah, exterior work only. So that covers new fascia flashing wrapped around the exterior. That'll be black in color, all-new vinyl windows, white windows throughout the entire exterior, and then new vertical vinyl siding. And then that color with the siding will be kind of a darker gray color. Our goal is to just go all neutral colors for that area, and it kind of helped match in with some of the, you know, I'm not doing any kind of lime green or anything to stand out. So nice and neutral, clean and fresh. Because, I mean, if any of you guys are familiar with that area, it's in pretty rough shape right now, so it just needs a good facelift right now.
Well, if you have any issues with your timeframe, just keep in contact with Scott, and he'll.
Yeah. And Scott's been great. I've had several phone calls with him just helping me get the application process going. And he always either is in the office answering the phone call for me or he calls me back very promptly. So, yeah, if I, like I said, if I foresee any issues, I'll definitely give him a call beforehand and try to get that figured out. But like I said, in an ideal world and situation, my plan is to have a tenant secured well before the property's even finished, so. But, yeah, that's kind of my spiel on it. And if you guys have any other questions, like I said, I'd be more than happy to answer it, so.
Perfect.
Do you have any idea what kind of tenant you might be looking for for that building?
Ideally, the tenant I'm looking for is either small retail, maybe like a boutique shop or something like that. Or my perfect tenant would be an office. People need an office space because it's really set up for something like that. It's got some, and one portion of the building, it's very open. And so people could, you know, add cubicles, desks, and chairs and stuff like that. So ideally, I don't, I could always, you know, I don't know what the process is getting a restaurant in there, but it's not set up for anything like that. So it, you know, talk about some tenant infill and stuff like that, and I'm new to that stuff. So like I said, I'm going to be, hopefully, trying to secure somebody that's looking for some office space or, like I said, small-time retail or something like that. Or barber shop would be cool, too. So, yeah, I'm not really sure. But that's, in my eyes, that'd be the tenant that I'm looking for is small retailer office space.
Well, make sure you meet Whitney over there. She's the Director of the Chamber of Commerce, so she can help you out.
Yeah, we already met, actually.
Okay. Okay, good, good.
Cool. Well, if you guys have any more questions, appreciate your time. And like I said, you know, I can give any of you guys my phone numbers if you guys think of questions later. Feel free to reach out to me, so. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russell.
Thank you.
I believe, open the public hearing if anyone else would like to speak to this. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council?
Yes. Some of you may not know Whitney. Whitney, will you stand up, please? Whitney is the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. She's been with us for a couple of months now. She's doing a fantastic job. She's very personable, but just don't touch her. It's a joke we are going today, sorry. But if you want to come in some time to sit and visit with her, she'd like to visit with you. She's pretty dynamic, fun to work with.
I agree.
Whitney G. Song, not Wendy, it's Whitney.
All right. Anything else? What is the balance that we have in the fund right now? Because we're looking at $7,500, so.
We need to vote on the resolution. Is that what you're asking about?
Well, we have to figure out how much we're going to recommend.
Okay.
The full amount.
Okay, I thought we were going to budget. And I was like, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Actually.
Okay.
Just this resolution.
Okay.
That being said, voting on the, like, deciding the amount, is that, is the 7,500 the max just part of this?
That's how it's presented.
So unless we want to change it, we don't have to?
No.
Okay.
It's presented as the maximum.
We have $15,000 budgeted for that line item. None of the funds have been expended this year.
Yeah, we're expanding to this year.
We're still good.
Good. That's all I needed to know.
All right, I will accept the motion.
So made.
Second.
Ooh, that's a close one. First by Mr. Lucas and a second by Ms. Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose. Thank you. Okay. Anything else from staff?
State of the community is coming up, October 25th, I believe, or 4th? I don't know, one of those days, sorry. You should have an email. I sent you all. If you have a chance to look at that. And please let Mecca know if you'll be attending. We'll have to get some tables purchased.
Anything else? Okay, real quick. Council staff liaisons, if you have not had a chance to meet with your department head, please do so. As soon as budget is over, I would like to get moving on those. Be a good time, end of the year, starting a new year. So if you would like to pick a day of a council meeting to do your report, that would be fantastic. If not, I will probably start assigning them here pretty soon. And some of them, we might move around depending on how much is on the agenda for that night. If it's going to be a long meeting, I'll probably push you to another meeting. But make sure you're in contact with your department heads so you know what's going on and can tell the rest of us. Also, we have, is that, that's next Friday, I believe, the Cannes, the Tigers. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
20th?
So a week from Friday?
Two weeks.
Wow, this month is flying, okay.
Yep, it is.
So please help out with that. That's another one of the trophies that we would like to keep here.